I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to roll call.
Ronald Knapp.
Present.
Kenny Hall is absent. Bonnie Omen.
Here.
Trevor Stone, absent. Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judy Haldeman. Jason Donahue is absent. Judy Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Tony Christash.
Present.
And Shen Lam.
Here.
You motion to a few amendments at the public workshop meeting held on October second, twenty twenty-five, and the regular public meeting held on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Ms. Haldeman, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Knapp, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to hearing, a person is present. If you'd like to say something, step up to the microphone, state your name for the record. Under President's report, at this time, I have nothing. Mayor's report.
Thank you. This Saturday, from one P M. to seven P M. will be a groundbreaking event in the borough of Northampton. It is our Northampton hometown holiday celebration, held in the parking lot of the recreation center. I encourage and invite all of our families in this borough, especially their children, to come and join us at this festivity. You'll hear more about it later, but I just want everyone to know that the effort, the ideas, the imagination, and the overall success of this program has been very encouraging to this borough. It is just another thoughtful event in the line of the many that we have here in the borough. From our paw prints on the canal, to community days, to our uptown street fair. We look to make this event a hallmark event every year for the tree lighting, which will take place at five thirty. So I commend the office staff, our borough manager Brian, assistant borough manager Jerry, for moving this along and turning this tree lighting into a true holiday festival. So plan on coming and join us on Saturday, where you'll find many events for the children, crafters, and food vendors, for adults, and just a fun time in community spirit for the holidays. So I hope to see you on Saturday. Next, I just want the board to know that I've accepted an invitation from the Chamber of Commerce to appear on W F M Z's Business Matters with Tony Iannelli in December. The taping will be in December, probably shown in January, but I'll be one of three or four mayors that are on that panel to discuss the downtowns and the smaller communities that dot Northham- uh, Northampton County across the board. So I'm looking forward to it, and this board has given me, this town has given me many things to talk about and to just share with everybody in the valley and in the broadcast area how wonderful Northampton is and how much we're growing and turning in just some really nice community spirit and efforts throughout the year. I know there were coming, and I look forward to that, too. So that's all I have right now, thank you very much.
Thank you. Solicitors' report.
I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you. Before I move on, there's something that I overlooked. We need to have a moment of silence for our firefighter, Mr. Michael Book, that passed in the recent couple of weeks. So we ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Reports from committees, starting with Mr. Glassick, would you read administration comments?
Yeah, I'll have it in front of you a second.
Okay.
One second.
Here.
Thank you. I was bringing it up here in a thing. There was two hundred ninety-three live views of the November sixth council meeting. The two thousand and twenty-six budget will be presented to council in December fourth council meeting. End of report.
Thank you. Building manager and recreation, Ms. Haldeman.
Thank you. The annual tree lighting will be held this Saturday, November twenty-second, from one to seven P M. Event will feature food trucks, craft vendors, kids' activities, and so much more. The actual tree lighting will begin at five thirty P M. Borough's very own Santa's mailbox is up and ready to receive letters for the jolly man himself. If you or someone you know would like to write a letter to Santa, they can be placed in the mailbox directly next to the Borough's Christmas tree in the rec. center parking lot. End of report, thank you.
Thank you. Code and police, our whole committee, there is not here, so I would ask, Mr. Knapp, would you read code and police?
We are nearing the finish line with the Borough's portion of the River Central Multimunicipal Plan. The plan should be finished within the next couple of months. End of report.
Thank you. Fire and health, Ms. Arman.
Thank you. The next Board of Health meeting will be held on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, at seven P M. Thank you to everyone who donated and helped make the fire department's annual basket socialist success. On behalf of the fire department, they want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. They also would like to remind everyone to practice fire safety when preparing your holiday meals. End of report.
Thank you. Public Works and Sue, Mr. Glassick.
Thank you. Uh, thank you to all the members of Public Works, as the mayor stated, there was a lot of hard work dedication for this week's, or this Saturday's hometown holiday event for success. We need everybody's involvement and come out and show your support for all the hard work that was done. On Friday, November fourteenth, and Monday, uh, the seventeenth, Public Works had to fix two clogged mains on north side of Dewey Avenue. That has been done. End of report.
Thank you, sir. Any unfinished business? Thank you, under new business, starting with item number one, presentation by environmental planning and design.
Carolyn Heagle of Environmental Planning and Design presents the Borough's new zoning ordinance as part of the Borough Central Multimunicipal Plan.
Thank you for the introduction, as well as the report component, uh, which upon I will, I will build. And the borough has been part of a multi-municipal planning effort stemming from the comprehensive plan. This effort is part of a zoning ordinance update. Within it, you all are participating as part of a multi-municipal effort, meaning that the five municipalities of Northampton Borough, North Catasauqua, as well as Catasauqua, East Allen, and Hanover Townships are coming together to consider the elements of zoning. Historically, the borough has had its own zoning ordinance. This effort will be maintaining that the borough has its own zoning ordinance. What is happening as part of this project is that the sharing of land uses among the five municipalities is something that the borough has explored and been balancing out with each of the other municipalities. This is something that is permissible because you have participated in a multi-municipal comprehensive plan. So one of the benefits, or the, one of the top benefits of that previous set of work is this stage of the planning. And in working with the Borough's Planning Commission, we're coming here this evening because we will be moving on to seek out a time period where there will be a public review of the document and available for that type of thing. It will be going to L V P C for their review as well. And following that period, that public review of forty-five days, the borough has the opportunity to schedule a public hearing. And we've been working with the solicitor, Ms. Stewart, to, in order to consider that we've fulfilled the criteria of the municipality's planning code as it relates to this process, as well as, and most importantly, balancing out the kinds of land uses that are here within the borough, the districts in which they're allocated, the mapping associated with it, and then being able to do that kind of thing where you're encouraging the investments in different areas and the types of land uses that people will have the opportunity to have here within the borough and complementing what you have. The types of uses, in some cases, that you've had in the past are now ones that other municipalities are able to take on for you, so that you can have things that truly complement what is happening in your different neighborhoods, your different areas of business, and having it fulfill what you seek as sort of those planning purposes. So that's an overview of the effort, and we appreciate the time. Welcome any questions that you may have, and of course, the coordination that will be part of the steps ahead.
Thank you.
Carolyn.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
What is the timeframe on it?
In terms of this, uh...
The completion of everything?
We're, uh...
Other boroughs and everything?
Mm-hmm, thank you. So the first quarter of twenty twenty-six is going to be the concentration of those public review periods. That's where we're seeking to do so. And believe based upon the progress that Northampton has made, that you are one of the ones that may have an earlier public hearing within that period of time, and other municipalities to, to follow or be paralleling with you. So it is something where we anticipate, as part of the public review period, and then the public hearings, that the adoptions happen individually within the municipalities. The document will go into effect upon the last municipality having its adoption. So I do not have a specific date or month, but we'll be lining those up with the municipalities with the aim to seek the public hearings to be as greatly within the first quarter as we can.
I can speak to that a little bit in terms of what, um, we have had some discussions. I've had some discussions with the administration in terms of the steps that need to be taken under the municipality's planning code and kind of where we are with things. So we're having, um, this presentation tonight regarding zoning uses. And then there also have been and will be changes to other aspects of the zoning ordinance, say, say with regard to perhaps setbacks, or fences, or, you know, those kinds of things that fall outside of zoning districts. And so we were hoping, this is our projected timeline, that the, the next meeting, Thursday, December fourth, for an internal presentation on the other changes to the zoning ordinance with Dave Lear or with the assistance of Jerry and Brian, or Jerry and Brian, um, making that presentation. And then at that point, the zoning ordinance would be ready to go to L V P C for, for review. They need forty-five days for their review. There are certain parameters in terms of advertising. And so we would hope to hold a public hearing on February fifth. With a vote following, it could be at the second meeting in February, it has to be within ninety days of the last public hearing, so presuming that we had one public hearing at the beginning of February, we'd be ready for a vote second, or second meeting in February.
Just a follow-up question, if I may. Uh, for the public hearing, is this a chance for the, the public then to question and decide if they're moving forward with it, or has that already been decided?
The, it's, the public doesn't make the decision to move forward. That is their opportunity to, no. That is their opportunity to comment.
To question.
To comment.
We've also had comments, uh, people attending the planning commission meetings as part of twenty twenty-five activities. So the way in which we've gathered comments and tried to build upon things that people may have on their minds. So when we get to that process, there may be some questions, but we'll be able to round those out with where we've been. Thank you for the February specifics, that's a goal.
So that's, that's our, um, hope.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Carolyn about the zoning uses, the allocation of them?
Thank you for your time. I'll get my things and then...
Consider approval of ordinance number twelve forty-two.
Ordinance of the Borough of Northampton County, Northampton Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, establishing a new compensation for the mayor, borough council president, and borough council members.
So we need a motion.
Does anyone have a motion on this particular item?
We need a motion or motion to table. Because I think we, you have to abstain?
The, the members of council who were recently re-elected at the general election in November will be abstaining, and we do not have a full complement of council, so I would recommend that someone make a motion to table the item to, to the next agenda.
I'll make a motion to table today.
Motion to table by Mr. Glassick, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Knapp, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider approval of resolution sixteen twenty-five.
Resolution number sixteen twenty-five allows the Borough of Northampton to apply for a statewide local share account for funding the Four Street Playground Rehabilitation Project.
What is your motion?
Make a motion to allow the Borough to apply for the statewide local share grant account.
Motion by Mr. Glassick, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ms. Arman. Any questions?
Just to announce that this is for the Cindy Miles, uh, renovation, all-inclusive playground on Four Street, just so yous know.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of Northampton Police Department.
Northampton Police Department is requesting that an actuarial study be conducted to determine if a five percent cost of living adjustment could be made to the Northampton Borough Police Pension Plan.
What is your motion?
I'll make a motion because I have questions.
Yeah, questions, I'll, I'll second that.
Motion made.
Motion to, to, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to, to, um, to approve the request for the study. I apologize.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Arman, second by Mr. Glassick.
No, I'm, I'm Ms. Haldeman.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Ms. Haldeman, second by Glassick, questions?
Yeah, tell me, tell me more, is this, is this routine that we do this every...
Um, the last time it was done was about four or five years ago. Um, it's a request from them to basically go to the actuaries, they would, they would do a study to see if it's feasible to raise the pension by five percent for retirees in the public's pension plan.
Excuse me?
Who pays for the actuaries?
Would that be every year?
It would be permanent. The five percent would be permanent on their monthly...
But every year?
For retirees.
For retirees, every month, their rate would go up five percent. Not like perpetually, but I mean like, it would be a permanent five percent increase. So like if you're, you know...
They're getting a hundred dollars, they're not gonna get a hundred five dollars.
Sorry.
So, can I ask another question?
Yes, ma'am.
So are you, you're saying that this is, this is basically to affect the people that about, the, the...
People that retire.
Retirees, and, and, and they're basically looking for a raise in their, in what they're, in their retirement. Is, is there a timeframe on, on, on the last night they were received rates?
Four or five years.
Four or five years. Thank you, that's my question.
What is the cost of the actuarial study?
I don't know off the top of my head, um, I can ask, it would probably be a couple thousand, maybe? Because there are also some other requests.
And what are they currently getting?
Uh, it depends on each, what each person is.
Oh, each room?
Yeah, when they retire.
Yeah, when they retire, the value of the plan that they select.
Oh, I actually have another question. How many retirees do we have?
Uh, eleven, on the police, eleven.
Eleven. So it, it would affect eleven.
It would affect eleven.
Eleven.
That's the cost of living, so it's the cost of living will be five percent. Isn't it based, sometimes three percent, sometimes...
This is what the, yeah, this is what the request came through as, five percent.
Five percent, so...
Does, does the cost of the study come out of the...
The cost of the study does come out of the pension plan.
It's not like it's, we pay for it.
No, we don't pay for it, the pension plan pays for it.
But if an actuarial study is done, that doesn't mean that they automatically have to be granted the five percent.
No, you would, it would be a resolution then, that you would have to pass.
So we'd be, we'd be provided with information from, from the, the actuarial study. And they, do they make recommendations?
They would, yes.
But we could choose to vote yes or no at that one. Could we also have an opportunity to potentially adjust it higher or lower?
Um, the study would be based off of five percent, because that's who would be requested. I'd have to, I can obviously ask for more.
Not, but...
No, I mean like more into, more...
Right, right, just to find out that if, if, if it would be a fair thing to potentially say, oh, no, not, we can't afford that much, but two percent or something like that, you could...
Yeah, I can ask for it.
Okay. Thanks, that's, that's now all my questions, sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, we have no other questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request for annual shredding event.
State Representative Zach Mako would like to hold our annual shredding event in the community center parking lot on Saturday, April eighteenth, from ten A M. to twelve P M.
Make a motion to continue that. Thank you to State Representative Zach Mako.
Thank you, Mr. Glassick.
Second.
Second, by who?
Second.
By Arman. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request for Eagle Scout project.
Gavin Abraham, a life scout with Troop Thirty-two in Whitehall, is looking to conduct an Eagle Scout project in the Borough of Northampton. He would like to place PVC recycle bins along the Lehigh River and Hockendaco Creek. There would be a total of four bins installed, two next to the creek behind Borough Hall and two next to the river in Canal Park.
What is your motion?
Make a motion to accept and allow Gavin Abraham to do the project.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knapp. Any questions?
Yes. I don't understand the concept of this, can someone explain it to me?
It's where fishermen use...
I know you cast it around, okay.
Yeah, when fishermen, they cast out and the line gets broken, instead of throwing the line out in the water on the side here, so they, that line, they put it in that.
Okay, and then who's gonna be responsible for taking it apart, lifting it, or whatever needs to be done?
That, I'm not sure. That one was not talked about, I... I don't know what they're gonna come in.
And when does that get done, like, is it on a periodic basis?
I mean, if it's depending, yeah. I mean, if, if it's a PVC cap, you might just feel the, the, to the guy, that we go down, we go down the path all the time to the garbage, if we see something in there, they can probably just take that cap off and clean it out.
And people walking by or riding their bikes, and they throw other stuff in, and it jams up, or...
Can happen.
Always that possibility, yeah. Okay, I'm sure he's gonna have some sort of signage for explaining what it is. I would, I would hope so, yeah. For what it's for, I mean, I, I, I'm pretty sure he said that there are others like that in other areas.
Does he say that?
So I believe that, I think maybe if you're an avid fisherman, like, which I'm not, maybe people know what they are. I don't know.
He sh- he shared with me last, after last meeting outside, I was talking to him, where it's gonna have like a, a trap door on, where you have to actually lift it up to put the stuff in, so you just can't go by, and animals can't just go in it.
Okay.
So he did, he did start by putting a lid on it.
Maybe I'll end like this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I too share concerns, however, that, you know, it's, you're saying that public, it's more and more responsibility now for Public Works to have to empty out potentially, um, you know, and it's, it is just PVC pipe, so how it's put in the ground, it, it certainly has the potential to become more, not work, but more responsibility for somebody if it gets knocked over, if it doesn't stay sturdy, um, again, potentially where it's located. I'm a little disappointed the young man didn't show up here tonight, um, since, I, I realized he was here last time, but because it wasn't kind of done properly on the agenda, um, that he's not here to kind of reassure some of the concerns, but I guess that's just hanging out for the...
Any other questions or votes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Me, yes, I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
I would like to get more information.
Bonnie is opposed, okay, how many is opposed?
Do we, do we roll call?
Let's do a roll call, please.
Okay, let's see here. Ron Knapp, this is voting the, to approve the request.
Approve it.
Okay. Kenny Hall is absent, Bonnie.
No, but can we table it by any chance?
Uh, you might have to go for this first. You have, yeah. Uh, Trevor's absent, Ron Glassick.
Yes. Prove.
Judy Hall.
No.
Jason Donahue's absent. Judy Kutzler, you are the, uh, deciding.
I hate to turn down an Eagle Scout project. We've got young people working.
We're not really turning it down, if we table it, we're discussing it.
No, we can't table it. You know, these are one of the things that we have to, I'm gonna vote for it.
At three to two, it passes.
Thank you. Consider request for road closure for Northampton Fire Department.
The Northampton Fire Department is requesting road closures on Saturday, November twenty-ninth, beginning at ten A M. for the services for Captain Michael Book, a twenty-seven-year veteran of the department. Due to the expected attendance, they are requesting the following road closures. Lurcham Miller Drive and Smith Lane, both parking lot entrances on Lurcham Miller Drive, Lurcham Miller Drive and Washington Avenue, Forward Drive and Clear Springs Road. In addition to the road closure request, they are also requesting the use of the portable bathroom.
What is your motion, please?
Make a motion to, to do this?
Motion made by Mr. Glassick, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ms. Arman, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request for road closure for Northampton Hometown Holidays.
This Saturday, November twenty-second, the Borough will be hosting our annual tree lighting renamed to Northampton Hometown Holidays. To make this a safe and successful event, we need to close Lurcham Miller Drive between Clear Springs Drive and Washington Avenue from noon to eight P M. on November twenty-second.
What is your motion, please? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Haldeman, second, by Mr. Glassick, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider covering parking meters.
The Borough is looking to continue the tradition of placing bags on the parking meters for the month of December. This would be effective from Monday, December first, to twenty twenty-five, to January second, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-six. Well, we're going backwards now. We're going backwards, yeah. Okay, every dude's played five or three firsts. One day only.
What is your motion, please?
I would ship it to cover the parking meters during the holiday.
Motion made by Ms. Arman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by who? Mr. Glassick? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to reports from council members, I'd like to start with Shen.
Oh.
You're up, girl, you sit in that seat.
Um, I don't have much to say, but I do want to say that I hope everyone comes out this Saturday for the Northampton Hometown Holidays and the tree lighting, and I understand that this is the first year that this is being done.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think this is a great, um, tradition, and we should continue this throughout the years. And I guess that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Haldeman.
Uh, thank you, Caroline, I, I know the amount of work that went into doing this, uh, so, uh, thank you. And, uh, everybody, I hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving, and that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arman.
Just would like to wish everyone and their families a very happy Thanksgiving, be safe, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Glassick?
Yeah, I just would like to say that our thoughts and prayers are with the Book family, as well as the entire, uh, fire, fireman's family, because I know it's a family, it's not just a, a group, it's a family. So our thoughts and prayers are with you, so, um, thank you, Caroline, for coming in.
Um, thank you Caroline for coming out and presenting this and having things prepared, I'm sure that it was, it's a long undertaking, it has been for many years, so I, I'm glad we're moving forward with it. Uh, just an incredible job to the staff and the employees and the efforts that are putting forth in this holiday, hometown holiday, uh, event that we're having on Saturday. I just hope that our borough comes out and supports it, because there have been enormous amounts of, of time, labor, uh, jumping on this, so I think it's gonna be a great event, and I really hope that everybody in our town can come out and support it. Uh, I know I'm restating what the mayor talked about, but really get it out there, other than that, just a thank you to, and a happy merry, uh, a happy Thanksgiving to everybody, be safe.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Kedda.
Thank you Caroline for your presentation, and also send my condolences to the Michael Book family for their loss. And everybody, wish you a happy Thanksgiving, end of report.
Thank you. Mayor, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I just wanna wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, we have so much to be thankful for in this town, so, let's, uh, do some self-reflection and count our blessings, and quickly, when will the budget be available?
Uh, it'll be the week of the next meeting.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Anything to add, Attorney's Board?
I'm looking forward to this Saturday's, I'm sorry. Hometown Holidays, and I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Well, thank you. Do you have something to say?
Oh, yes, you know what?
Yeah.
I apologize, we did hold an executive session, um, to discuss personal matters.
Thank you. Moving on to announcements, so start with Mr. Jerry Serintzic.
I don't have much except for to reiterate everyone, what everyone else had said, um, happy Thanksgiving, make sure you come out this Saturday, should be a great time, um, we're all gonna, most of us will be there, um, and then also to send condolences to the, the Fire Department and the Book family, I know he meant, I know he meant a lot to the Fire Department, and he will sorely be missed, so.
Thank you. Mr. Wells go.
Yeah, um, yeah, my condolences go out to the, the Book family and the Fire Department, I know, like Jerry said, how important he was to water rescue and the pool department, so, uh, our, uh, our thoughts and prayers go out to everyone. Caroline, thank you so much, I know it was a long trip, I know it's not a short fifteen-minute drive for you, so, I appreciate you coming out, and I know we've, you've been involved with this over a year now.
I've been.
It's probably used that drive by now. Yeah, by now, yeah.
You might have known by heart.
I've been involved.
We need GPS or anything.
I've, I've been here for a couple of days.
No. Oh, okay, well, that's good, okay, driving with eyes closed, I just know, I'm turning, um, but thank you, I know it's, it's been a big effort, and I know you have five different municipalities to kind of corral and get focused, and change this, change that, and give advice to, so. Uh, we're excited, I know I've been involved with it for three years now, over three years, and I know everyone here has been involved with it in some capacity, so, thank you, I, we really appreciate it, truthful. Um, in regards to the pool, I know that was a big topic at the last council meeting, um, we have been talking about it, having a lot of internal discussions and conversations, and coming up with different ideas. Um, we, at the next council meeting on December fourth, we will be able to give an in-depth conversation about it, and kind of give you where the update is, and kind of plans for the future. But know that all your thoughts were received, and talked about, and heard, and we're able, we have taken everything to heart, and have listened to that, and really thought about it as we're going with the process. Um, with that being said, um, Saturday is Hometown Holidays, it is a big day, um, I can't thank the staff from every department, the businesses in town for jumping on board, businesses outside of town for jumping on board, for sending in donations, for sending in different things to, for the basket raffle, just everyone coming together as a community, and not only in town, but from the surrounding areas. It's just been great to see, um, unfortunately, nothing from the Pittsburgh area came in.
Caroline, you came just for that.
I, you came, I know, you're here, you're just for.
Four days.
Yeah, the central's just a separate thing, this is what, but, um, but it's truly been great to see, um, everyone in town just getting on board, the staff, I don't think Megan has slept in about six weeks, I think this has been her entire focus. Um, just everyone in the office is jumping on board, things that they normally wouldn't even focus on, they've made it their focus, and I, it's been honestly a collective effort for the first year doing it. Um, I, I don't know the last time I've actually seen Megan, more than five minutes without talking about Christmas or in general, but, uh, we've been going out at night just to kind of test the lights, to see things we can improve, areas that need to be changed, so it's really exciting. Um, there is going to be thirty-plus vendors, whether it be craft vendors or food vendors, um, there are three large tents down there, there is, um, going to be two bounce houses, caricaturists, balloon artists, face painting, um, a ticket booth that is gonna be run by the man in the corner himself. Police Chief Ryan Kedingo, he's really excited to get on board, I'm sure he's gonna hate me for that shout-out, but he's really excited to get on board, he's gonna be wearing the Santa hat too, so it's, um, oh, I'm gonna hear about this one. Um, but we're really excited, um, to have everyone involved and help out, I, it's gonna be a great opportunity, there are four live performances throughout the day, from, uh, our very own Gene Kutzer's band, uh, there's a magic show, uh, one of the local churches is doing Christmas carols, uh, the Antone Hobo Band is gonna be here, all of them have forty-five minute sessions or sets that they're running. Um, meantime, there's gonna be fire pits for at night, for people to stay warm and get some lighting, uh, the Ballet Academy will be performing, Good Shepherd School will be performing as well, as usual, as they always do. I hope everyone comes out and sees, the weather should be good, it should be in the high forties, which at this time of year, if we remember from last year, is about twenty to thirty degrees warmer than it was last year, when everyone was frigid and I was wearing about four or five layers. Um, so I hope everyone comes out, at least for five minutes, just to see, the vendors will be there till seven o'clock, so if you do come out just for the tree lighting, you can still have dinner, a snack, while the bounce house is closed at five, but if you wanna do that, there's that too. Um, but it's, it's gonna be a great opportunity for everyone, and you get to see Mr. Kedingo, so that's, that's worth a treat, and so, um, but I, I.
The one time you want to see him.
The, the one time. Well, as a police officer, you know what you know. Well, yeah, sure, but.
On that aspect.
I could see the other time.
I think I will now, um, in my judgment, um, but truthfully, I can't thank the town and everyone in general so much for their effort, and even if only three people come, it was still a great example of community, of unity, and seeing everyone really come out and celebrate such a wonderful thing. Um, so with that being said, have a happy Thanksgiving, I'm sure I'll see everyone on Saturday, but if I don't.
And if I, if I may just, uh, again, I'm glad you talked about the pool, because I don't want people thinking that we did not, uh, labor over this, it's a tough decision, and we have a lot of thoughts and things that we're trying to work out, but, uh, it still hasn't been decided yet, so we're not saying that anything's thrown in, but thank you again for bringing that up, Brian.
Uh, somebody's come to my attention in the past minute or so, there's a lady here that would like to speak, so I would need a motion to reopen the public comment so that she could speak.
Make a motion to allow her to speak.
I have a motion, allow her to speak, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You always have it, step up to the microphone.
I'm not as prepared as your other speakers.
You need to speak here to the microphone? It, lift it up a little bit, the microphone, so we could hear you.
There you go.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now talk.
I'm not as prepared as the other.
Your name please.
Uh, okay, Sally Stiles.
Okay.
Um, I happen to live very close to the pool, so, um, obviously my family has enjoyed using the pool, and I'm, I have some questions about, um, some of the paperwork I looked at from the last meeting that was on the computer regarding the pool, and I have a list of a lot of questions, so maybe somebody would just wanna just like review this before the next meeting? Or do you want me to read some of it?
No, we don't, no, I wouldn't want you to read them.
You can leave the questions with me and Brian, we'll, we'll look at it.
I mean, I can, I.
Yes, and they will.
Yeah, because, um, I noticed like, um, the rental for the concession stand hadn't changed for like twenty years or whatever, and I don't know if that would be better off, maybe rent it weekly, buy like local businesses that wanna have like pizza week or something like that, and just kind of like figure out a rate, um, daily rate, and just make it for the week, so like if the pool's open the entire day, it would be like one set fee, if the pool had to close early or something, it would be less, obviously there's some days when the pool can't even open because of the weather, you know, then there'd be, there would be nothing.
That has everyone asked.
So we'd have to like, kind of like, figure it out a daily rate, because how do you do it if like, let's say somebody rents it for the whole season, and we can't use the pool for some reason for a while, then they're paying like the same fee for the entire summer?
I think what you're referring to, that what you're talking about is that.
It's a fifteen hundred, yeah.
That's the, that's the person who rents, who uses the concession stand, it's their business to go into that concession stand, they pay that to the borough to use that facility.
Right. Right. I was just wondering if we could maybe rotate like weekly, like who rents the concession stand, maybe have like the pizza, pizza place, the taco place rent it, and, and try to run like weekly specials or daily specials to get, you know, some ideas to get more variety, um.
Well, you can leave those questions.
Yes, we can address that.
Mr. Wells go.
Yeah, because I, yeah. I, I was to kind of like, how much, um, income was from like daily passes, season passes, borough residents, non-borough residents, what were the daily attendance numbers, you know, for student and adult, and, yeah.
Oh, we have a register.
Um, were there trends, you know, different age groups or whatever, you answered my question about, um, oh, about the concession stand, but the pavilion, did people pay to rent that for birthday parties?
They do, yes.
Like, what's the fee for that, like?
What is, do we know offhand Megan what that fee is?
What, ninety?
Ninety-five.
Ninety, was it?
I think it's forty-five.
Forty-five?
No, we, we, didn't we, we raised it this year.
I think that's why it's probably best to have your, rather than have a back and forth during the public comment.
Those kind of, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, cause like, as I said, some of these things made me wanna, wanna look up, I just wondered why like the cost of wages, wages nearly doubled from like twenty nineteen and then to year twenty twenty-three, when it didn't seem like there were major projects being done that year, just some general questions.
If, if, if you would like, if you, welcome to stop by the office and we can, we can sit down and talk.
Yeah, I can leave, I can leave a copy here with somebody, and you can make copies and look at it.
Sure, sure, yeah. If you'd like to stop by sometime.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
And, and I just had a little note at the bottom about the street cleaner, um, but I don't know if we're gonna talk about that.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, please know that we have looked at everything that you have talked about in depth, in depth, we've talked about the concession stand, we've talked about, uh, employees, we've talked about it all.
Yes, the administration has, has taken a close look at those issues.
Yes. Oh, very close look, so, we're not ignoring you, but this is something no one in this borough wants to do, and it, we just don't wanna do it, so we have been studying everything there that you're talking about.
Does the borough have a question about fundraising, like what would people care?
We cannot do that as a borough, for the pool, as council, we cannot do that.
Right, but private citizens can, but then who would oversee it?
That, that would not be us. Okay, you'll, talk with, uh.
Stop and talk to me and Brian sometime about it.
Yeah.
We'd have to sit down and have a conversation, we can answer all your questions.
Yes, thank, thank you for.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
For coming to the meeting and presenting your questions, and I, you'll be able to have an opportunity to sit down with, with Brian and Jerry.
Well, we don't wanna close the pool, it's not gonna be a choice, we want to, so, thank you, Senator. Okay, moving on. I need a motion by council member to pay the bills.
Motion made to pay the bills.
Motion made by Ms. Almond, do I have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Glassik, do I have questions?
Yes, Ms. Ms. Holdman would like to go first?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Sure?
Yeah.
I would be glad to have you to ask.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Allied Control Services, it says electric, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's for electrical supplies down at the sewer plant.
Okay, um, CDW Government Incorporated Computer Software?
Yeah, it's computers for the police department, computer software.
Um, AD Proof Screen Printing?
Yep, it's, uh, shirts for public works.
Okay. Uh, New PIG Corporation?
Uh, materials for the Fire Department.
That's his corporation name, New Pig?
Yeah, New Pig, yeah, their hat is a pig.
Oh, it's cool, okay.
Those are actual pigs, they're like those.
And I. I greatly.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the, the, the oil thing, yeah, they're called pigs, they actually soak up oil for it, spills.
Okay. I learn something new every night. Um, I appreciate James and all the work that the controllers doing on these bills, but really, like, three pages of PPL, electrical independent bills?
Yeah, PPL has now started to send all their bills basically at the same time, so they all come in as basically one.
It's nice though that it shows areas that we could track, and see if there's certain areas that are going up higher.
Yep.
And why we can control it, so I do like the fact that everything from PPL and every building is separated, which will be able to say who's not saving electric, who's trying to, you know, really nice with that, I think RCN is doing the same thing?
Exactly. Mm-hmm.
Okay, NUGI?
Yep.
Okay, good, that's the only, that's all I have.
You covered mine as usual, that's why I let you go first.
Feel free to take it sometime.
I do when you're not here, thank you.
Oh, good.
Any other questions?
No.
Question, okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You always have it, I need a motion by council member to adjourn the meeting.
Motion made to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Almond, do I have a second?
Second.